Or zoning or research, I should say, either one.
Yeah.
Can I suggest something? Tom's a man of the list and I'm a movers in the motion. Could we say something like one visible from public right away? Because for example, my house, I have a slope. If I built or put mechanical equipment at the bottom of the slope behind my house. My neighbors aren't going to see it. The road's not going to see it. But based on this, I'd have to treat it, right? So if I'm in this low area next to my house. In from the road, I have to put walls and landscape around it. Where.
Yeah, I would say that's an and so I was referring to rooftop and this you're you're talking about item one. Yeah, I I agree with that too. So tha- that's the same in my house, my. My mechanical unit is is behind the house. I screen it anyway, just because I don't want to look at it, but. Uh that it it isn't visible to anybody else. I I would agree with that.
And then, yes.
Well, would you agree to because my thinking on this was we should not make this part of R and D. That that district, just leave them out.
So that goes to Tom's point, I think about maybe just residential.
Well, where a budding residential, I think would.
Right.
It makes some sense.
Surely because you don't want to move downtown, but R and D, I think you're right, I mean.
Hey, I agree with leaving it R and D out of it entirely. And industrial.
You've always required screening, even in industrial. Remember the last time we died? Um, no, Friday, no. Uh, yeah, variety die and U I S when they did their buildings. Um, but I know it was righty. We required a just a little screen so that it wasn't visible from, in their case, the road. Um, and then anything that's facing a residential.
Uh, it it has not always been, if you if you look at a a Google Earth of the industrial park, you see very few of those units have have screens around them. Uh, that this came up with. Well, in any case, I I it's just not common period, and the screen from what again? It's an industrial park, if you're screening screening one industrial building mechanical unit for another industrial building mechanical unit, that's. Again, that's to me, that's a complete waste of money. Uh, it's not, it's not a requirement here. You have you have all kinds of like mechanical equipment out behind the building. It's not screened, but for some reason, the rooftops. Are offensive to people, I didn't know, so I I I I consider it a. It's very uh common for community not to screen industrial or research period.
On the roof.
Right, on the roof.
Right.
So you want to take the number two completely off?
Well, with regard to R and D now, so that begs a question, so if it's in, say it's retail, say it's bushes. Uh, I I would maybe consider like that zoning. Uh, a a P U D or or. Um. You know, some of the may Baker Road corridor, things like that, I think maybe screening would be appropriate in some cases. Again, it would be like where it abuts. Um, residential, right? So an example would be the daycare. If they had some big mechanically units and and there's uh. The condos are are behind them, then I I think it would be reasonable to screen that and that that would actually have a public benefit.
Hopefully we work kind of language to be in this central business district, village commercial district. We have village commercials.
Yeah, and then even then I would put a weasel in there like.
Yep, village commercial, A R C, B R C and P U D districts.
Yeah, and even then I would put some in there at the discretion of the planning commission, so the the we don't, we don't, you know. Do something that's silly.
Okay, so again, you're referring to rooftop units.
Correct.
Okay, but you did want to take the parapet wall out?
No, I think the parapet i- is I was just saying that we should not be.
Relying on that.
Yeah, saying that we want the parapet to screen the unit because you could end up with an eight foot high parapet then. So I just to be clear that it's it's sending it back from the roof that's accomplishing the screening, it's for not really the parapet.
Right, right.
Right, which we've got on the other part as far as.
Got the twenty foot setback, I think it's twenty feet, right? Yes, twenty.
Okay.
You don't think we could say one adjacent to residential land use or zoning classification?
What says?
At the discretion of the planning.
Yeah, I think we'd say that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine, then.
Then we don't have to labor pick out a reading. The center C V D.
Right, we could specifically exclude industrial and research and development and then say that for everything else.
Okay.
So then then we can, we can talk to applicants and make sure it makes sense, kind of like their.
Yeah, and if you get like a view of like what, what's visible from that street? Is they understand what you're saying about the view shed or the viewing angle?
Right.
Okay.
Let me understand, you don't want me to do C V D, V C, A R C and B R C? Um, you want me to? Say all districts accept?
I would say, uh, uh, under our discretion, all districts except R and D and in industrial. Do we have any, we have one more industrial?
Things industrial, our industrial, but.
Residential, yeah.
Okay, so just R and D, you're right. Yeah, that's, oh, yeah, right, only little ones. So just R and D would be excluded and then everything else would be under the planning commission's. Uh, judgment, however you want to word that.
So we have to, so when adjacent to residential. Residentially zoned or used property. All rooftop mechanical shall be screened. Um. All the way down to the attenuation, subject to um. Discretion of planning commission.
Yeah, something like that.
Planning commission. Um. I don't think we need to say accept R and D because R and D does a but residential, so.
Okay, right. Okay, I think that means you're.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yeah, if you don't want.
Okay.
One other question I have is should the should or shouldn't a definition include solar installations on the roof?
We have that already in the one of those.
Those are banned, I believe.
They're in a, they're in a section all by themselves.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um. Uh, so any other feedback?
So are we, are we adding one of this book from a public right away to one?
Two. Um.
The one that's ground mounted.
Yeah.
Well, it, the the reason we screen. Um. Well, the side yard would be, I guess for rear yard residential won't matter. Um, but some multiple families. Um, it's just really. Side to side, but I guess that would still be within a public right of them. Or.
So neighbors, I don't know whether neighbors can see it, you want to screen for neighbors.
Next job. Okay.
It's mostly inside grasses, so that there was air circulation.
Right.
But it just softens the.
Right.
And then two, B C. I either want to remove the word easement or say easement specifically prohibiting such installation. Um, because you could have an easement where you would be allowed to install this equipment. And then it's at your risk if they need to go here and easement, right? So the way it's written, if there's an easement. Um. It can't be placed there, but if the easement says you can place it there. What could it be?
Yeah, right, okay.
So what one of the things that say specifically prohibiting prohibiting such installation?
Yeah. Okay. Said it, Tom?
Yep.
Hey, did I help?
Excuse me, I've got a couple of things. When we, there would seem to me, first of all, when deemed necessary by the zoning administrator occurs. At worrying in the number of places. My. Comment in that regard is in a situation such as you mentioned, Tom, your place. Where screening really isn't necessary because you can't see it anyway, isn't that a situation where the zoning administrator ought to be able to? Say that, rule on that, as a rather than a strict interpretation. Where a site visit, subject to screening is necessary, no one can see it. Um. So I, my question there is. Maybe it's rather than when deemed necessary or. If deemed unnecessary by the zoning administrator, something like that.
Oh, wow, that's interesting. So that would, that would then just bring you in if if there was a, if if there was a dis- disagreement and the homeowner wanted to make a case that wasn't necessary, that's that's interesting. I I wouldn't object to that.
I just don't like putting staff in this position.
I agree.
I just don't want, the reason I put that in was. If I put everything at the discretion of the planning, there are things I do every day. That's the last thing we want is it be having to bring. So, um, however you want to work it, so that it doesn't require it to vacuum when it's unnecessary. That's all I'm looking.
Yes.
Yeah, and and I I think good policies that were clear enough and what the intent is. And then we offered some options so that the homeowner adult or, you know, the ground, whoever the property owner is. Is ultimately making the decision.
Could we put in more the planning commission and then if you want to put it to the planning submission, that's remarkable.
Then you'd have to put, subject to the planning condition, subject to playing commission discretion. If the zoning administrator wants to say, it becomes a very.
Very painful.
Yeah, it's kind of weird. So do you want me on the number one that? Um, uh, the chat just mentioned all ground mounted mechanical shall be screened, but with plant material fences or a wall unless deemed unnecessary? For the, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, if you don't mind, I mean, I, tha- that should be a rare case, really.
Yeah, I mean, I I it does put that, like, I don't typically like putting staff in that position, but this this is a little different because then you would only be called out on the rare occasion to say. Yeah, I'm fine with that, I don't think it'll come above.
Uh, it's just, it still does the same thing. But it gives an applicant the ability to request not have to do it.
Right.
As opposed to being told they have to do it and then. Well.
So what decides if it's necessary and that that's going to be your problem, right?
Right.
So it's necessary when X, Y and Z, and that might be just internal policy, thing that's kind of written so that people have guidance when they understand you're not being arbitrary, but. That that's, that's where I would fall, like, just just have something to fall back on.
Right. Yeah, a standard, okay. Yes.
Seems like when we talked about this last month or whenever it was. Always one thing.
In a minute. Yes.
So one. And the only. And there's no mention about that anywhere in here except for in towards the very end, there's provide sound and and attenuation. Um.
The rooftop, yeah.
Yeah, the. These things can be noisy, the old, then the ones are. But the older ones are definitely very noisy, we've got a neighbor stopped on a roar on whatever, and here. So.
Is this rooftop?
No, it's not.
Okay. I I would hope that that's solved really with technology, that that's not really a problem anymore, but you know.
So one of the things we do, I'm sorry, I didn't need to.
Sure.
Um, we ask for the standards as part of the application process, so manufacturers cut sheet. And they generally identify the main effect, uh, the manufacturer. Um, identifies the different models and provides a a. Decibel level. And, um, as long as it's less than sixty five, is that every is the the. The decibel level of the property.
It's just a fan, so it shouldn't be that loud.
And as long as the cut sheet shows it that way, and most of them have that more quiet setting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So it. Kind of. The, people have old equipment and they're not expected to operate their equipment because it's too loud for me. Um.
Not yet.
We can work on that.
Okay, no, good, good point. Um. Okay, any other discussion on this is ever?
Yes.
Allison.
Oh, I didn't see your hand up.
So the, the distances that were provided by the fire to come over those. Like, are they, are they building code related? Because I, one is like five feet from the house, like for air conditioning, my air conditioner is definitely not five feet from my house, not even close, maybe a foot and a half that it tops.
The, um, I'll do, like Grace, because Grace talked with them.
Yeah, they sent me a sheet that was related to like portable generators. Um, that was Ed, who I talked with, and he told me that they frequently run into similar issues with the. Um, standby ones and with people having carbon monoxide calls because of things like that, so that was just kind of.
So is that only pertaining to generators then and not like air conditioning units?
I don't consider exhaust coming out of, of an air conditioning unit, there is exhaust coming out of a generator, so it's.
So it should be clear it's a generator.
Yeah, not everything.
Anything.
But we can, if you want that language tweaked, we can do that.
Yeah, that would be be.
Doesn't say that.
So this is all they.
Any combustion engine would need to be vented or something like that?
Is a, is a.
Right.
The generator.
Their gas.
Well, it's usually, you know, this is dry gas or.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a natural gas powerage.
Okay, we can fix it, so it's not just all ground mounted.
Or exhaust, well, I mean, you can't really say exhaust because. I don't know, does an AC unit have exhausts?
Not really, it's just hot air usually.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Why don't, why don't, instead of, um, where's the one? We can just say all exhaust generated or. I can use the language that you suggested, Tom, in that B. Um, and then do you want it? It. Use that. Or up at number one?
Like B one, ground mounted mechanical equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Ground mounted combustion. Mechanical equipment that shall be located in a rear yard, minimum five feet from the structure. It serves in a minimum of ten feet for window openings and air intake valves.
Well, do we want to just say generator because a lot of people aren't going to know combustion, they're not going to know, that's what we're talking about. They're going to think that's anything. A lot of people are going to think it's a compressor, yeah.
I mean, the only thing it could apply to is a, I was trying to think if there's anything else like a combustion type of thing, but.
Right, um. Ground mounted mechanical shall be located in the rear yard period. Um, and then separate that from the minimum of five feet. And make that a new sentence where it's, um, generators.
Yes, must be a minimum of.
Yeah, that would work.
Open A below it. He talks about side yard, should that be A or should that be two?
That should be two.
Additional thoughts?
I'm talking about combust, does a grill use combustion because it could be interpreted as being that?
No, we're going to say generator.
We're going to say generator, yeah, no, it's true. Is it using natural gas?
It's not mechanic.
You don't need a permit for.
Both the. You don't need a permit for a. What about for a a direct gas line feed grill, that you would, right?
No.
Um, you know, a full sub.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, we don't.
Okay, it doesn't matter, I forget. Okay, so, um, everybody, so we made a bunch of changes to, you want to highlight our changes, Michelle?
Okay, so it's, um, B one, ground mounted mechanical equipment. Shall be located in the rear yard. B one, two generators, uh, shall, um, be placed a minimum of five feet from the structure it serves. And a minimum of ten feet from window openings and air intake valves. Two B three is the ground mounted mechanical equipment, maybe located on the side yard. Upon review and approval to zoning administrator and shall be set at a minimum of three feet from the property line. Um, the next change is three. It's going to be, um.
These.
Three, yeah, three B, ground po- ground mounted mechanical equipment shall not be placed in any public or private right of way. Easement on a specific. Easement specified. Prohibiting such installation or for a yard. Um, and then for the screening. Uh, all ground mounted mechanical shall be screened with plant material fences or a wall unless deemed unnecessary by the zoning administrator. Um, and then two is when adjacent to residentially zoned or used property. All roof mounted mechanical equipment shall be. Screened when visible from the public right of way. Um. Or a pitched roof integrated into the architectural design of the building. Of sufficient height to screen the roof equipment and providing and provide sound attenuation. Subject. How do I put that? Uh, subject to the discretion of the planning commission. Location, height and screening method shall be shown on the site.
Okay, sounds good, I think. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay. All right, so. All right, with that, then we. Have the motion with, so I, Roberts, we had a couple of, a lot of changes to that, so do you support?
Um, yes.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, I didn't write down who seconded that.
I did.
Tom Phillips, okay.
Yeah.
Assume you're fine with changes, okay? Um, okay, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Roberts.
Yeah.
Covert.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Heatley.
Yes.
Phil. Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next up, another public hearing, another text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Uh, this one is just basically to allow Michelle, the zoning administrator or whoever that is in the future, to. Uh, initiate tax amendments to the zoning ordinance, so I guess, Michelle, you want to give us a little background on that one? Or Grace, all right?
Can do that.
Pretty short, just a change to the section twenty three oh one, and she's never amended to add. Um, that amendments may be initiated by the zoning administrator in addition to city council, uh, planning commission for. Well, that is, will hopefully expedite the process on a couple of things instead of us bringing you to have to talk about and then. Side if you want to initiate and start the process and take out like a month of.
Yes, I think that's a good, and and to be clear, we can always vote it down, so it's not like we had to have to agree with it at that point anyway, so. Okay, um, so at this time, we will open the public hearing, if anybody would like to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address, or raise your hand if you're online. Seven oh, uh, seven thirty five. Or seven thirty six, sorry.
And again, with this one, if the planning commission takes affirmative action to recommend approval to council and council accepts that recommendation. And you, the ordinance would become effective seven days after publication of a notice of adoption.
I've been thinking, Michelle. Um, with that. Well, uh, I'm giving another couple of seconds here to at least turn the number. Okay. Seven, at what that will close the public hearing at seven thirty seven, my clock, my clock flip.
Okay.
Okay, so. We have discussion, we have motions. And so it's, yeah, again, rather short staff report, pretty short and simple, we do have our motions on page twelve. Maybe would like to make a motion?
Make that motion. Pursuant to section twenty three point oh six of the city of Dexter zoning ordinance, together with the information presented by staff and the input received during the public hearing. Conducted by the planning commission on February five, two thousand twenty four. The planning commission recommends the city council approves P T A Z O twenty four zero zero two. Text amendments to the zoning ordinance article thirteen oil twenty three. Uh, amendment procedure section twenty three point oh one is presented and based on the following finding. Documentation provided by city staff essentially, do you want me to read that?
No, that's fine.
Good. Okay, move tell, so sport.
Sport.
Or Heatley, any discussion on it, is everybody clear? We're asking here? And. Questions?
There's just a few.
No.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thing, seeing no discussion or questions, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Phil.
Yep.
Covert.
Yeah.
Phillips.
So.
Yes.
Heatley.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Moving right along, pre-rates citizen participation, we have none tonight. Uh, moves us to reports of officers, chairman report, and you don't have anything to report today? So we'll go to planning commissioners, anything anybody wants to share?
No, Z B A meeting again.
Oh, Z B A meeting, okay, sorry, Chad, I know you're looking for more excitement.
Yeah, right.
Um. All right, sorry, and I, any other committees? That met this month, probably not, Arts and or those, whatever the rest. Anything else from committees to share?
Um.
Oh, yeah.
If there's nothing, there's.
Oh, we hired a contractor for our, uh, spring and well, this spring and next year's, um.
Okay.
Working with. We got it.
That's awesome.
Worked some before, but they got reviews from.
But what was the name again?
From Boldly.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so Parks, Rock and Underhead.
Sounds good, um, Michelle, your report.
Okay, so you've got my report in front of you, um. Uh, the first item is the Dexter school board request, which we're going to talk about. Um, under item, new business item, um, nine B, so. Uh, we'll go, we'll be deep. We'll dive deeply into that item at that time. Um, uh, the Kentwood conceptual P U D is going before council on Monday. Uh, we received the superior storage revised site plan today, um, that will be most likely on your agenda for next month. Um, and we submitted for a housing grant. And Grace has an announcement.
Um. Yeah, I'm going to be leaving at the end of this month, I took a new job working in the city of East.
Hey, congratulations.
I'll be back. It's been really great.
Well, thank you for your assistance.
Oh, congratulations.
Hey, congratulations. Um, were you, sorry, were you done?
I'm done.
I have no more to say.
All righty. Council, our council rep is out today, so we'll just move along, citizens wishing to address the commissions. Seeing none, old business. The P U D texts, the public hearing, or to set the public hearing, to consider the tax amendments for the P U D.
Yes. So the, uh, E U D session, this kind of weirded head when we were going through the panel. You conducted a one hearing at preliminary, um, but the, the, um. A concern was raised that that's not the appropriate way to. Do a P U D public hearing. Um, and on further investigation, the M P Z A or M Z E A does say that the legislated body. Um, prior to approval must. Conduct a public hearing. So, um, we're not proposing eliminating the public hearing at planning commission. Because that wouldn't give any opportunity until the very end. Which makes almost no sense in my opinion, but that's okay. Um, so we're adding, what we're proposing to do is add, um. Public hearing for city council. After planning commission makes the recommendation on the final plan. Council will then hold a public hearing and, um. Well, they'll schedule the public hearing. And then they'll, which would be considered their first reading, then they'll hold the public hearing. And after the public hearing, take action which constitutes their second reading. Which details with M Z E A and their charter. It's a, it's a long and detailed. Amendment, there were other cleanup things that we were, that we found to do. At the same time. Um, I really think this makes this a better ordinance than it currently is. Um, but happy to take any comments from you.
Questions? Yes.
I have a comment, I, I'm really disappointed in this, uh, from the legislature on down, it, it seems like it's. It's, uh, trying to politicize a planning, uh, process. And I mean, it goes over in communities very well, uh, that have. No leadership and want the, you know, to, uh, throw the applicants to the residents and. And, you know, and, uh, and not make any decisions that are good for the community, they want to. They want to be popular. And, uh. I'm very disappointed and, and from the, from whoever on council, uh, started this process. Um, I'm not surprised, but, uh. Very disappointed that, um. Uh, planning commission's, uh, role is being undermined by, uh, those people. So. Good for them.
Yes.
Just.
Yes.
Rather. Didn't you, didn't you just say that it's? The, um, ability to hold a public hearing is not being taken away. Our planning commission will still hold a public hearing at preliminary. At preliminary, we're adding one at final stage that council will do. Okay. And that. That makes it, that makes that particular ordinance compliant with M Z E A. The Michigan zoning maybe. Okay.
Do you know when that was changed, by the way? Cause it didn't originally say that, it was changed.
I think it's when we did, when they made it the planning enabling legislation as opposed to just the playing that.
Okay.
Would have been two thousand six. Every single ordinance I've looked at. Nobody has it at plan, so we're.
Right.
We're all doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that begs, the, the begs the question of the value of the legislation, if that's the case.
No, I agree with, I, I don't disagree with you, so we'll just.
It's, yeah.
We'll hold.
Yeah. Yeah, right, but I think we'll do what we can here, yes, Mr.
Well, kind of, kind of loosely. If we were the deciding body, we wouldn't have to hold it.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
That would be, that would, that would be a big elephant to.
So that would be.
Right.
The council.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they could leave, they could leave it how it is. But we'd be in error maybe. To the co or to the mission.
Enabling the zoning. Yeah.
And then the other thing I wanted to bring up with regard to this, so H one D. Information related to condominium development. Submitting condo documents, master even bylaws, with things that are theme lines. At the same time, you submit a final site plan. Um, in, in my opinion, that's a lot of effort for something that has the opportunity to change. You can request here in writing that. You wait until final. Or you wait until after we'll see this. Applicants may request that the seminal and review of condominium documents be postponed. Until after city council has taken action on the final meeting plan. Does that mean if I ask for that postponement, I have to come back outside of my final site plan and have? Counsel take action on condominium documents? Why is that? Why would we do that? What, what's? What is tried to be?
To ensure the condominium documents are, um. Prepared. And, uh, consistent with. The plan that's going to approve. And aren't contrary to zone. Because.
But it's not their violations.
So. A lot of the condominium documents that we have. Um. The language. Sometimes feels very dubious. So. We. I'm not trying to.
Can this, can this information be? I don't, personally, I don't think that it necessarily needs to be reviewed because we've already approved. Uh, P U D, which has development standards and regulations, we've already approved. You the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And if, if the condo docs are prepared and they're in violation of that, then. I think that's in violation of the agreement and the P U D. So that's kind of on. The developer, but if we're going to say that you can request to postpone this. That. We should have something in here that says reviewed administratively. Instead of make somebody go all the way back to go before the council to review. The master deed bylaws and into the big ones.
And to be clear, usually when they're, they are, they're made to be to disagree or to be stricter sometimes than zoning ordinance.
They are.
It's, they're in violations when they go the other way, they permit something that isn't permitted.
So the other issue you get into is. Only certain things are required to be in those documents, and if. We as a community say, no, we want to have this in it. Then we're contrary to the. Kind of. Rule, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we've run into that before where we've been asked to put things on them where we can't, and that creates an issue.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I just think. That doesn't, it's almost creating more work than is needed, so I, I would just say. Don't, don't, don't request that it gets submitted, don't require postponed or delay, and just have them. Submitted after final site plan for administrative review by. Whoever, who does it not, that I'm assuming. Zoning administrator, you have your kind of review.
Yeah, so Tom, are you just saying, cause. Yeah, I, I agree with you, I wasn't gonna necessarily get into it now, but now that you brought it up, it's a good idea, because I, I didn't question that. The whole condo development doc thing in the past too, because. Like we, I don't know that our role, it, again, it's like a legal, it's a zoning administrator, you can look at it, it either conforms to the site plan, if it doesn't, then they have to come back. And then the legal team looks at it too, so I don't know why we as a planning commission have to look at.
Things that we, that usually gets put into that master deed is. Changes that can be made by the developer within a certain period. Usually it's six years. Um, if you don't require it to come back. For either administrative approval or approval of planning commission council. They get amended and we don't know about it.
But they.
And that creates an unbelievable amount of problems. I've had that.
But can't you just can, like, I don't know why the planning can, because if there's anything that affects the site plan, we're gonna see it, we have.
I get that, if you don't mind it being administrative, I'm fine with that, I just didn't want to. Put it out there for you.
Exactly, no, I appreciate that, but I think, again, I think it's mostly a staff level review between legal and the zoning administrator, if there's an issue.
That's fine. Then what else?
Flag it to us.
H one D, I'm going to put at the end. Of K.
Then it would just be in it, but would you keep till?
So after, after time for effecting approval. Okay, final P U D development grade. And rezoning effective approval, you would have an item three that says.
The information related to the condo docs and you just submit it administrative review.
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect, yeah, no, I appreciate what you're, you're trying, yeah, you didn't want to take anything, you're trying to be open and transparent as possible, so. But. That's a good.
And then you can strike that last.
Yeah, yep, that's a good edit.
Right.
Awesome. Okay, uh, let's see, other thoughts on this chat?
One thing's. One by I, when I was reading through this, then it, I under J. You a. Council determines that there is additional information needed to make a decision. And what caught my attention was, and the applicant is willing to provide such information. Why do you?
Yes, the choice.
The ability to not.
Right, well, then I guess they just wouldn't go, but yeah, I see your point, that's like, yeah, if they're willing, then we're not willing.
I think it, my. If you're not comfortable with that language, you can take that.
I don't want to.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary. But.
I guess if they're not willing to provide it, doesn't help to just make a decision.
Yeah, right, right, I guess they just make it, we're not willing to provide anything. You made a decision, I guess. Based on nothing. So you take your chance. So with these, uh, changes on it, we would, would you still want to set the public hearing for next?
You just set.
Yes.
Here for next month. So take action on that. Um, and then I'll incorporate your comments. Um. Into the final draft that comes through for the public.
Yep, for the public care, okay.
I have one question. Alright, when I was reading. Um, okay, it's. They're moving around, anyway, um. Okay, is this is C? C one, anyway, it says at this stage, complete details of landscaping, site rate, site grading, drainage utilities consider are not essential. And. That's for the conceptual review. Right, and then a little later, when we get is what should be in a conceptual plan, I thought. It was, you're coming pretty close to saying we really want to see landscaping, there's a lot of. Stuff related to drainage and all that, and. And, um, just a conceptual one, okay, then, that can just be a little bubbly thing. It's not, it's not. Detailed, these are the speed, these are the counter.
Right.
Okay.
Generalized location.
Yep.
Any additional question on that? Is that okay?
If you want more or less? No, I don't think we should put them through a whole lot of stuff, that first turns out that they're gonna get.
Yeah.
Turned away early on.
Okay, so we're not seeing other feedback, can we have someone scheduling, someone move a public hearing? Schedule a public hearing for the March. What's the date?
March fourth.
March fourth. I'm gonna be gone. But.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Motion to schedule a public hearing on March fourth, twenty-two thousand twenty-four to consider amendment the article twelve, article. Twelve, article twelve and article nineteen.
Article twelve and article nineteen, sorry.
Okay, move tell.
Support.
Support covert, to set the public hearing for next month? Any other questions, comments? Can we have a roll call vote please?
Covert.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Phillips.
No.
Phil.
Yep.
Kowalski.
Yes. Alright, public hearing will be scheduled. Move thing right along, discussion revised elevations of the new fire station. So I know, yes, we have our guest that's been waiting patiently.
Yeah. You've got the plans in your packet, um, this is David Gasson, he's a partners and architect. And he is the architect that is working with city council. On the design for the new fire station, um. Like every comment that you guys have provided to us. We funnel to David, there've been a couple of rounds, we've gotten an email. Um, and now he's gonna go over the changes, uh, with you. And, um, take final feedback. On the elevations and hopefully, um. If everyone will be comfortable at this point, so we can continue to move forward.
And then Michelle, just for a, a brief update, so then on, on the press, again, because this is not an action item for tonight, so we're just giving some feedback. So when do you have an update on like what the anticipated, anticipated timeline would be after? Like this, basically, as far as any new site plans?
Um. They're working on the site plan now. Um, O H M is doing your engineered site plan, David's working on the architectural elements of. Uh, the, the site plan. Um. If I'm not mistaken. It will come in for a May movie.
We're aiming for a project or combined, I mean, area final.
Okay.
Okay.
So they'll have that submitted at the beginning of March. For the April news.
Okay, cool. Thank you, okay, take it away, please.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate being here with you tonight, to kind of share some update, um. A lot of it you have, um, initiated, which is really great, because we got some input casually along the way. I don't know if you got any plans other than the elevations, I won't dwell on the plans, I'll just kind of give you an idea. It's the three level plan, uh, Main Street, the park level, and there's an Alpine level also, so it's kind of a three level building. Not all necessarily. Uh, connected or stacked on top of each other. Now, the ground cover on the Main Street is about nine thousand square feet. The ground cover at the lower level is about five thousand square feet, and on Alpine is about three thousand square feet. They all are vertically connected by a single stair, that's common to all of them. I'll just give you a sense of the, um. Where the building lays out on site. Couple of elevations, um, you have seen something before that had five bays. And, and the project's probably in the ninety-five percent range of nearing its final definition. A lot of things are driving changes, cost being probably the biggest, um, function is the balance of that though, uh, obviously. Uh, what we're looking at here is, um, the Main Street elevation, we won't see it necessarily like this in a pure elevation. We have some renderings in the package you probably saw, I'll give you more of a real life view of it. But the simple thing that we've done, uh, that makes difference other than the five bays going to three. Has added some architectural features to it. Um, by changing it from what was a little bit of a contemporary design to something that's a lot more. Traditional Main Street, uh, in terms of fire stations. Those elements that have added to do that are the. Looking at the vapors. The stone framing around the doors, the arch header. Uh, a, a lot of the, um, elements are now, uh, stone and brick, this is a modular clay brick on that Main Street elevation. Here in between the, the doors or a pier element with this capstone. Going up to a corbling band before it gets to the parapet that has a cornice, that's a cast stone cornice element there too. Um, this also, um, has a parapet, as you were talking about earlier. For a couple of reasons, one, it's always been meant to screen, uh, the mechanical units that are gonna be behind it, so it's about a six foot parapet. Previously, you may remember it had a slope to a parapet. Uh, demising down, kind of following the topography of the site. It's still starting with about a six foot height, so it's, even its previous, it's screen the material, the mechanical equipment. Moving over to the, uh, multiple level. Part, the lower level is meant to be kind of overlooked and more towards the. Upper levels where you can see a little more detail, a little more of the architectural features with the arch, arch windows. Stone frame is a header across those. Down below, we framed the windows completely in a stone, a cast stone around that opening. And have a, a water table element to distinguish, uh, the maestri a little different as it meets the ground, so you can see that kind of in a. A tan, a tan color, uh, and then that window sill, it goes into a red, uh, clay brick. Uh, that area also has the, uh. Corbling, uh, to kind of create that more darker line, that's all the same red brick, but it had the shadow. And it's a little bit more dense because it's a soldier forcing in there. As you move through the top, again, it has the stone cornice work, uh, to kind of define the top of. And, uh, I don't know who's controlling the slide.
I am.
Oh, great, so you could. So this is the Alpine street, uh, elevation, uh, obviously, it's, it feels like a, a small, smaller stature type. Uh, about nineteen feet, it is a parapet. Uh. The floor line here is about three feet above Alpine, and Alpine diminishes that as it gets to Main Street, so it's not consistently three feet different. So we're dealing with that, we have a, a stair entry and accessible entry. Uh, that will either be a slope walk or ramp, uh, there's a couple of things that are gonna de- determine that once we get site engineering. Um, input. But nonetheless, there will be an elevation grade change from the new sidewalk along Alpine. Uh, up to the building, there'll be a green belt between the sidewalk and, and the building as well. Same kind of elements, uh, in terms of stone sill. A clay mason, modular brick, um, and a stone header across the arch, uh, windows. In the cornice, cast stone element at the parapet top. There is a couple variations still left in the building in terms of finalizing what the building's gonna be, this shows what we're calling the base building. Entry to the fires, the far right, the kind of the storefront glass entry space. There is an alternate. Maybe it's the next slide. Uh, so this shows, uh, adding an element of vertical circulation for Main Street pedestrians to get from. Uh, Alpine or Main Street, uh, down to the park level without, without having to cross in front of the fire station in their active footprint. So that's the, the, the added section to the right, again, with a lot of glass here. Um, and then we see the person standing off the farthest right will either be. Um, and then we see the person standing off the farthest right will either be a walkway into that entry. Um, or per- perhaps an entry plaza that's more of a gathering, uh place making space. Gets a, a lot more, it gets bigger for one, but it has a lot more interactive space seating, et cetera. That's yet to be determined, that's a element that's kind of. Getting on the sideline, but this shows that additional element is vertical circulation. The, the next. This is the park side elevation uh without the vertical circulation I just talked about. This is approximately thirty-eight feet from the park uh up to the top of the building. Probably five or six feet more than it is now. That reasoning is a couple of things, um. Uh, there is gonna be some lift of the building about a foot for the floodplain that we have to deal with that grade. Um, but the top of the building gets bigger to solve the functional deficiencies of the fire station right now, which is they don't have enough overhead space in the apparatus bay. On Main Street, so the building gets about five feet tall. Uh, there's a lot of undulation, you see there, that's really the parapet way beyond and the, in the state we're in right now, the computer programming. The computer programming is using the same insurance on the front elevation here, so that does not kind of distinguish different building elements. At this point, let's say we're also like ninety-five percent down with this. When that comes back to you, uh, that'll be cleaned up and show proper colors, et cetera. So it won't look like different elements. There are gonna be two active bays uh on the lower level to complete the functionality of the fire station where we had five before on Main Street, we have three now and the two below. The reason for that, just background is. If we don't do something in the park level now, we won't ever be able to capture that space for fire station functional view, so. Idea is they need five bays, let's, let's capture the lower level park um access now, at the only time you can. And uh, put three up. Uh, you'll see some, there's some natural lighting in the bays, that's kind of those uh horizontal three windows there, they're high in the bay. And there's that access point I talked to you about, here's how you get from Alpine Street sidewalk into that vertical circulation. Which goes down to the park, you'll see it better in the west elevation to get to that. But that's one of those items we're trying to define a little better. Hopefully, we'll be able to add in that kind of place making plaza entry that I talked about. For the next one, breaks. This is kind of an overall bird's eye view, kind of giving you a sense of how it fits on Main Street and Alpine Street altogether. You'll see here, here is a green roof, that is green. But the intention is that it's a, a, an active space potentially. For a plan, you could have a plan and see this is a conference space. Um, corridor coming out of this active point. And here is a amenity for. Physical fitness for the firefighter, so they could access that rooftop for indoor-outdoor uh physical activities, which is a very common trend now in firefighting, it's not just. Using equipment in a room, it's getting in and out of the building too. Part of uh that is. Not purely the design of the building, part of that is for a future potential training space. That it were to happen sometime in the future, this would get built out and that green roof would be captured, interior. Uh, classroom like education, training space. That's a hope, we'll see how that goes, it's a future thing. Uh, point one of the here is that a firefighter is if you're going to a fire station, but where they live, so there's a kitchen, dining, living kind of space, and it's all right in this area. Part of that is heaven, outdoor patio, and uh we're showing a trellis here to give them a little sense of privacy. It'll be an easy thing to look into as you're walking down Alpine or even maybe at the corner of Main Street. Because of the sense of privacy, um, they'll, it'll be elaborated with um. Copper safety elements, railing, and then some. Um, vegetation of some sort to add to the privacy element. Um, and then overall, we're gonna, you know, do an overall landscape plan for the, the site as required, so that's gonna be where we emphasize some of that. For the next slide. Different vantage point, more easterly on Main Street. Um, we'll point out that all of this is intended to be played nationally for our theater, and this, and we look at many differently, you know, economical. Um, that's a product, it's called C brick, it's a, it's different shape or different size rather. Um, it's a four by twelve typically, uh, in a different size, it's twelve inches deep. It has a, a simple look, it's, I think you have it here on Main Street and. The building where our, our breeze is, that's, I can't remember the name of that building. Oh yeah, so that's a similar kind of treatment that they did on the sidewalks there. Adds a lot of economy and also adds a structural component to how we build that wall. This is another vantage point, this won't, won't be easily, easily seen from Main Street, if you have that, that diminishing sidewalk from the corner of. Trying to give you a coat label at it. If you want an Alpine. Would, I'll explain a little more to do, but, but except for the, the big one here, but around here will be some safety railing with vegetation to screen the view of the railing, but. It also gives us some privacy there. We use the Alpine Street and south, the vertical circulation. And there is added. There's the. Base building without the vertical circulation, and there's the vertical circulation added. That rounds, rounds off and, yeah. The one, anyone, I would like to say we're through the channels, I, I know there's a lot of stakeholders in this project. Residents, all of you, and US commissioners as well. And council, who we get a lot of direction from, the user group firefighters, et cetera. Um, and then also the staff, so we've been taking a lot of in, input and trying to. Um, evolve the design to a, a, a design that will, you know. Satisfy all of those that are interested, hopefully, some of the comments that you put forward, you could see. A response to in the design as it is now, and like I said, we're about ninety-five percent done, I hope. And that we're gonna get um. Like a directive of proceed uh with the city council meeting next week. There's still a lot of factors before that happens, but I'm really hoping that you're pleased with the direction we're going in, so when you see it. Again, for your consideration approval. We will have um had a lot of your preliminary thoughts and maybe concern.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, yes, planning commission, we don't have any uh like a definitive action item, but. Um, but we're open for discussion and feedback. Who wants to start? Like the most feedback originally, or maybe there's no feedback, alright, here we go.
I'll leave it off, uh. Unfortunately, I wasn't here, I missed the funding mission where they were here before. So a couple of questions, like, the only time I've. Visited the fire station in the past was with cops, scouts, and grunt scouts. So if I were doing that today, I'd be entering on Alpine Street with, with new rendering, right?
That's correct.
To visit the fire truck. Uh, and I think I heard you say that there's scalability with this. Uh, like if they wanted to build a classroom, um, I mean, it wouldn't have to be. Structural improvements necessarily or anything, right, it's built that way for the scalability or expandability.
Yeah, that's correct, that's a very good point, yes.
And did I see balconies off the side on the back side?
Yes, there, there is one at the living quarters areas, basically they're going mode. Then there's one at the Alpine Street level off of the chief's conference room area.
So this would be the cruise.
Yeah.
Or if you ever have an upward, you know, way to get out, that's for the chief's office.
I work on a lot of projects and the balcony seem to be one of the things that go. The quickest to get evaluated and figured out, because not a lot of use of them, but maybe in this case, there's gonna be some. Some use at least off of the living quarters of this. Um. And. If we have those stores on the back. So our first responders leaving that, coming out in the parking lot, going up the hill towards the road.
Did you mean these are the two, like, you know, the bay doors there?
Yeah. Yeah, that was gonna be a question, right?
My recollection is it's kind of a tough drive up and around, and I, I realize I'm speaking with the architect and maybe not the site team. On this, but is there gonna be some sort of. Warning up top by the bridge, like a flashing light or something that says. Hey, there's an emergency, fire trucks are gonna be entering the roads. Uh, I just recall being down there before using the park and. When we left, you kind of go up this hill, right? And you don't get to see the road until you're up at the. Entrance almost, so that might be something, um.
To, to respond, th- there, there won't be a, currently, there's not a traffic light planned. But there are pedestrian indicators of. Action, whether it's on the main street doors or the park level doors, there will be pedestrian indicator, something.
Beyond, pardon me, we're interrupting, but beyond the pedestrian. That's a multi-use driveway. Emergency vehicles and then all park uses, they're using that block, so presumably of what you're talking about there, that's all that.
Well, that, that will be something that needs to be an operational. Thing that's discussed, currently, there are two bays down there now. They're not incredibly active, um, but there are two bays there now. We, we are increasing the depth of that parking area approximately twenty feet, so the space or the aisle between. Butt-to-butt parking is not twenty-four feet, it's forty feet. So there's giving some, I'll call it flexibility. And early in, in the process, we've done the geometrics to show that the trucks. Get in and out, um, getting in is probably the bigger challenge than getting out. But um, it's gotta go through some detail engineering, but right now, by expanding the park. Or the paving into the park level by twenty feet. Where we gain that flexibility and movement there.
And um. With that, it's probably safe to assume the equipment that they use regularly that they respond with is gonna be on the first floor. Versus maybe. More specialized equipment that would be on this lower level maybe.
More like the, the reserve equipment.
Yeah.
But there, there's gonna be three bays on the upper level, currently, they're forty feet deep. And we're expanding to fifty-two so they can double stack some of the smaller, like the. Command vehicle or the brush vehicle, which are basically trucks, they could be double stacked, but they're real, they're real uh. Active, like their engine tanker, they'll be on the main level.
Yep, and then um. Might have built a eight forty-three. Last thing I wanted to say is. Uh, maybe one more at it. That one right there. Um. You see how the false, what do you guys, what do you? Architects call it, by the bay, there's the uh false wall in front. Yep. Where it's sticking above the actual ceiling. You see how the distance? I don't know what's.
Yeah, it's a six feet.
That's six feet, any way to turn that corner and step it down, like amount of steps?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of a visual aesthetic as we're driving. Into town.
That's a very good point, and maybe not stepping down, or it could be, if you just turn the corner and have a. A higher section, it would look like that's building element, nor, I know it's not another false wall, but it would look like a component of the front part of the building. I think that's a very good architectural kind of. Enhancement, the way it might look coming to the east from, or to the eastern one.
Well, I didn't get to give feedback the last time you got, I was asked, apologize, but I think this looks really good. Thank you for addressing that. The comments.
Yeah. Um.
Yes. Karen? Well, a couple of questions, what is, alright, that, um, the low kind of block in the very front? Wh- what is that, what's its function?
This is portion for your.
Uh huh.
It's primarily their decontamination area in the building, when by credit, the turn to the station. You have to go for a sequence of chambers that they gain themselves, clean their equipment, so they enter here before going anywhere else, and so, and so they are now in the process of getting clean. They circle around to a couple rooms and that's in this building right here.
Okay.
Before they enter the station, so they need to be separated from the station.
Okay.
And F P A is requirement, and that's uh, it's around the corners, the. And the patio, which is the dining space and.
Okay, you've got the little containment area. Decon area. And then it's separated from the area, then you've got a kitchen and your day room and things like that, and on the other side, yeah.
Well, I, I guess one observation is those, the two doors, I mean, I realize you don't wanna invite anyone to go through them. So you don't wanna make them too attractive, but they, it does kind of look like the back of a building, and I, I'm not sure what. I would do with it, but. I, I, you know, that's a, I think it's, you know, you're gonna drive into, into town and you're gonna see that. Very quickly, those two doors, so that's one thing. Second thing is, I'm a little confused by on the back. What, you know, the verti, I guess this is what you're. No, these would be horizontal elements, what is the? One, you know, one, one rendering, you have a door kind of around the corner and there, there's a. Railway, let me see, where is it? And then one you don't, so, and I'm kind of confused as to what that door. Is, the one that's on the side.
Yeah, the alternate plan.
No.
No, I think the, the alternate plan, I think you're referring to the change of the alternate plan.
Forward and backward, Russell.
Right.
That, like.
Yes, you see Karen, it's the alternate entrance?
Oh, that, that one.
But it's the back.
Into the, what they call the vertical element.
The ele, that would be the entrance.
Yeah.
As opposed to what's running. Okay.
And there would take you, there would eventually be an elevator to get down to park level. And there'd be a door, you can see the door.
Public lobby, warming area, the fresh rooms, and it's also the way you get in the elevator that brings you up back to.
Okay.
So you don't have to. Walk out on the.
Got it, okay.
Does that help?
Yeah.
If you go back to that one um view looking from the west, great, so I want to point out that.
So, I mean, you bring up a really good point there, there is something about that that looks. Less appealing than maybe other elements, this piece right here.
Yeah.
And you pointed out, right, we're not trying to bring anybody to test the, hey, this is where you go. We don't want any port, zero up here. And so this is a firefighting, firefighting area only, but just by passing by, or how can we address that? You probably can't see with this corbling here, pier element, let me introduce the pier element here, here, here. We can probably break this wall up, so it feels a little bit more continuous across the elevation.
No.
By putting a, maybe a pier here and maybe a national, who knows?
I think there's a little bit of finishing we can do to address that concern.
Would you want any type of?
Don't come in here. This is not for you.
Something. Um. If, if, if I'm not mistaken. All the windows there. Are those all the standard glass windows? Or are they actually only some of them, I can't remember, David?
Some of them, this was not exactly, it was a kind of dress up going to Main Street, that's the deal, for the rhythm of the windows. That's an actual vision window, and the, and where we're dining rooms. These, that's the decon, so it's, you know, you go in there, go yourself down, that's a false window, that's a false window, the dining chamber. False window, and then that's the actual kitchen window, so there. We added those elements. To the architecture, not to the function.
So there's no way public space in front of this building, like, right now, if you go there to visit.
Yeah, right.
Well, then in part there.
Right.
With, with what you're, what, what's being proposed, there's no public heck there.
No.
You're like. Putting striping or something, that kind of.
There will be.
Slashing and.
There'll be signage and light, pedestrian.
You're gonna say like, no entry or authorized personnel or.
Exactly. That is a huge safety issue right now, we're trying to improve that with this bringing public and pedestrian all to Alpine Street.
And then the only interface with the, with the park is either from Alpine up there at the space or through the entry road and sidewalk. Going down.
Yes.
I'd walk along main.
Yeah.
Is, is being designed and engineered.
To wrap around.
A wrap around, because there, because if you're going to have the vehicles coming.
Yeah.
In and out more frequently, there has to be a safer way for people to get down and. That is being done.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in right there, cuz that was one of my questions is going to be, yeah, is the access, cuz this is the first, and I apologize, I wasn't at the first meeting of this either, and. And this is the fir, five to three bays on the upper level is a pretty significant change, cuz I. If, if you can go back to the park view. That raises alarm bells just because, like, and you, and again, some of these questions aren't for you, I know that there's many other. Design considerations, but how often those doors would be used? Because, right, the. Because, right, the previous, and I know there's bays there now, but they're like never used. But I think that that's, that would seem to result in a significant amount of changes to enter and exit those doors. Because the great, and you answered part of it about that, that whole drive going up is completely blind, you can't see until you crest that hill.
We're going to have to, we're going to have to address, we're going to have to, like David said, as the, the engineering design is being done, figure out how we address the fact that it's a blind. There's some blindness up at the top.
And, but I, I, one of the concerns that's raised from, from, I think this is, I, I, again, I'm not a design engineer, of course, but, or civil engineer for that matter, but the grade slope, I don't know how you're going to level out that grade slope to get to Main Street, you're going to have to bring that. And it, so I think a lot more thought needs to be put forward about what those bottom bays are going to be used for, what kind of equipment? Because those slopes in the, I know you said you ran those diagrams, but I'm concerned that that's going to have to level out that, that drive going up to main. There's no, I know you said twenty, and again, I, I didn't know about the twenty feet in the park, but I think this is an issue that needs to be looked at sooner rather than later, because that could result in more to get those grade changes safe between sidewalks and the access up there to get a visible or a truck or any kind of fire emergency vehicle that needs to go quickly can get up there and look at traffic between pedestrians, bicycles and cars on Main Street. That's a huge.
Respond to that, there, there isn't really a plan or a perceived need to change the grade of that drive. We're going to elevate by about a foot, for probably reasons, but as it meets Main Street, it's going to stay exactly the way it is right now. Um, the frequency of the use there, like I say, I think it's primarily going to be reserved vehicles, their, their real needs and their daily, uh, uh, apparatus or the vehicles are going to be on Main Street. The need to come out of the park is going to be, I'd say, fairly infrequent, I, I could be corrected by the chief, but.
Right, I would ask that as a follow-up, just because, right, I know that you, you can't answer that necessarily, because it, it depends.
I think there's a couple of solutions to this, the, um, number one, the trucks sit higher than our cars, so that's one thing to consider, is we're
True.
Up a little higher.
Much higher.
And then two, um, I know Grace mentioned she's going to East Lansing, the fire station I can think of in East Lansing that has a light on in front, so if there's, uh, emergency, they're responding to the light goes, stops traffic, and then they can pull out and.
Well, I, we're not talking about a light, though, I don't think.
So those are things that have to be talked about, and more than likely baked in because it's a safety feature.
Okay.
So whether, because you're going to have a parking lot that's going to, um, be serving double duty. You're going to have to have some alarm or some light, something that lets people know that, you know, there could, there are vehicles coming out of the back there. And then again, at the top, for the, for the stop to Tom's point, it, it's.
If I could just.
Yeah.
One more question, that's why that, uh, extra space with the elevator and the stairwell and everything's interest, like, interesting to me to see how, is, is that something that's likely, not likely?
That's, again, that's, yes.
Because then everybody could park up on Alpine to access the park, right? Or.
That's going to be a question, yeah.
So.
And I don't know how much we can answer now.
If there's not a, I mean, like, if there's not a lot I can answer from really far, it's whether it is or isn't. What I can tell you is that council is very sensitive in a good manner to the fact that there needs to be public restrooms, and there has to be a way to get people from Alpine down. Um, part of the reason that the front has gone from five bays down to three, and they even go down to two, is because they have to fit within the budget. And that budget probably still needs to be able to have this vertical element. It may have to be built and constructed in phases and set the outside, but maybe not everything on the inside done at the same time the fire station is built. Um, but my gut tells me that they're going to, the council's going to literally try hard to find a way to get that done.
I would think so, and I, I think the only other thing I'll add to that, and I'm done chat, is just, and, and I'm, like, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I just want to make sure those kind of design issues were really thought out about how much that's used in those grade changes and how, because people, no matter what, even if we put that accessible entrance there, people are still going to walk down the front of Main Street and go that way, especially because now we're planning residential and other uses across the creek. That's only going to increase that traffic, so that's where I want, yeah, it seems like a little bit of a potential conflict.
The point you're making is not being over, we're really looking at how do we, how do we do this and do it well?
Okay, yes, Tom. I'm sure, sorry, chat, sorry, that was it, chat, not.
First of all, that grade change can't change. Roads up there, this is down here, so it's going to be steep no matter what you do.
Could if you stretched it out, that's my theory.
How can you do that?
Phil.
I'm taking out the.
Yeah, you take out.
Well, exactly, it could be done.
I expect there's going to be signal up there, like, like you mentioned, East Lansing, perhaps, I've seen it many places.
Yeah.
Where if there's a fire, you just stop traffic on the, the, you know, on the street.
Yeah, that's very common.
While we're looking at this one, I.
Oh, that's true.
Why isn't there, I'm curious to know why you didn't, uh, include extra your stairs as well now? So people don't have to go inside, they can just walk down. I know it's steep, and I know it's a lot of steps. But why not?
Generally, they're unsafe. In our, uh, climate, outside stairs are unsafe.
Heat them.
But you can heat them, and you have to cover them, and then you're halfway to enclosing them, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's kind of how we want up there.
Okay, I mean, there, by the way, I should say, I really like how you, this has evolved from what we first saw with that pit roof and all of the other, I won't mention, but nevertheless, the other stuff you had, I, I, I like it. Um, but nevertheless, there's steps, there's stairs there right now, I, do they close them off in the winter?
I think they just don't use them in the winter. The, I, if you, if you haven't traversed those stairs, they're not safe on a good day.
Yeah, I have many, many times. Um, you mentioned, you show on one of your plans, a green, a green roof that's being used as outdoor activities. Has any consideration been given to making the rest of the building have a green roof, I mean, a real green roof?
Um, there has been some discussions about that, um, but, um, it wasn't a strong, uh, or high priority when we measured it out and all the other needs when we looked at the budget. This is, actually, it's not a total commitment, it's a desire. This, this green roof may not be a green roof. And when I say green, I just mean color, it's like a, a vegetated roof. But that's, it's a budget.
Yeah, it's vegetable. Oh, there's a green roof, that's all, all, also being used.
Just, just, just this portion.
It's a, it's a concept, it still has to be vetted out, to see if it can follow from the heart of it. It can be. We could move in that direction.
I'm fully support one down that road.
Yeah.
In this day and age.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's a couple of things in our opinion, just about elaborate, it's a visual element from the passerbyer. Uh, especially the walker on Alpine Street, so to see a roof is not that appealing. Vegetated roof is kind of interesting and neat, but it's also has some energy efficiency, um, byproducts to it as well.
One last thing here, which I've not heard anybody mention, anybody. The old head race, it's in that building right now, in the basement of it, where you can actually get into it. It might have been a tail race, but nevertheless, it's there. Has any thought been given to what, rather than just filling it in and closing it off? In some fashion, making it a, um,
Yeah.
An interesting feature down there that this is what was part of the old mill when I was here, and this is how it functioned, I mean, it's there.
Yeah.
Um.
That's kind of cool.
Well, there's been a lot of discussion and evaluation of it, that the mill race is currently blocked off um, on the south side of Main Street, you can actually get down into the lower level chamber and walk down, not like the tunnel, a fair, fair way. It, it has a little leakage to it, but it's been bulk headed somewhere down, I haven't seen it myself personally, but I have an engineer or architect that's gone down and looked at it. Uh, the attempt, uh, what we're going to attempt to do is remove the whole building, including the mill race, and then build up from there, so it will require us to um, fortify the bulkhead that's there or do another one behind it, more likely what we're going to do.
And that discussion comes up, there's somebody here on plan commission that would have checked, because it's there, and it's something you're not going to ever see again, um, and it's interesting.
Yeah, this, this is very cool, the, the turbine chamber, which you could kind of get a little glimpse of, too, is kind of an interesting thing, too, and the way the building was built.
Yeah.
Um, the whole, just the whole history of this is interesting, in that it was kind of started during the war, stopped, and then abandoned as what it was going to be, and then totally redone, and when you look at the structure underneath, you, you look at it and say, wh- why is it like that? It's because it was a building halfway built, and then another building started four or five years later. Fully different use.
What David knows, and I know, that a lot of you don't know, we have the hand-drawn architectural and hiring plans from when Ford was going to.
Build his.
Build his, his factory.
Wow.
So it, it can't be safe, we've got these plans, and we can have, my thought is we select certain ones, have them trained, and utilize them in different museums and buildings.
That's really cool.
So we do have that to do with it.
Last thing before, before I run away, um, I am exceedingly interested in what the site plan, what the site plan's going to look like for the building, so, in fact, I would guess that approval of the plans contingent upon what happens with the rest of the site with this building, I mean, there's a lot of parking down there now, so. I don't know.
That was a little bit of my question, my point of making sure everything on the other site was just in case there had to be changes that might affect the design, but. Yeah, so again, the sooner we can see some of those things, but I know that's all, sounds like we're going to get there soon enough. Yes, Karen?
I'm confused, is there going to be any public parking down at the lower level?
Yes.
Yes, they're still going to maintain.
Roughly the same amount as there now, it'd be there in the new design.
Okay, um, other than that, I like this thing, I think it looks great. Uh, just any other feedback, I think, then we might be done with discussion on that one. Thank you for your patience.
I appreciate it.
No, it's great how the, uh, thank you for how it's evolved, and I know it'll continue to evolve, and you're working, I know with many, you're working with us, telling you one thing, you've got council, you've got your little design requirements, you've got firefighters, so, yes, thank you for your patience.
Lots of interesting parties, I'm sure.
All right.
Very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along, new business, capital improvements plan, that's that time again.
So, uh, in the packet, I put together, uh, first of all, there's the table of changes of which you can kind of get an idea what's going to be different. There's a couple of projects that were completed, um, I can only add in one new. Yeah, so that's the community part, well-accessed, um, we just separated it from the. Our improvements. And then beyond that, there are sheets in here for comparison, um, so that year was the first year we, we're love software that we first placed, um, and the sheets we made last year were kind of, uh, a transition, I guess. Um, it still took a lot of time to change each individual people to the way that it looks. Uh, so we are moving towards more of the online platform for it. Uh, but in order to put it in a packet, I have to put the truth in, uh, which doesn't really look so great. Uh, but so for this month, I just kind of put a comparison, so you can see how each project looks. And then wait for that, uh, if you're looking for like how this software can look in a finished version, um, the city of Salini uses the same software and they're. Just, yeah, in the PDF format, it doesn't really look.
It's not designed via physical copy, it's designed.
Functional, probably, it's designed for function, not necessarily for looks or appearance, so.
Oh, so when you see like the different charts and stuff on the website version, you can click through the charts and there's a um, there's like a homepage that's all of the different projects categorized by, um, by which funds they're coming out of. It doesn't really translate to a physical document.
So, um, what other points, and like, what other decisions, feedback you need from us at this point on this? Or?
This is more, like you said, this is a transition.
Okay.
Um, um, which will be, I'll coming back next month for you, um, with a draft CIP.
Okay.
It'll be in this form, it's not going to look good, but it'll provide you the information to see where things are, you know, what changes are being made, where are we tweaking things, you'll be able to look at it online, um, in, in a much nicer looking format. Um, but that's how we're going to be going forward from here on out. Your physical copy will look like that.
Yeah, but, yeah, as long as it's usable, right, exactly. There's few of us looking at paper copies of things anymore anyway. So that's okay, I guess, um. So then, do, do you, so we're not giving any feedback on the specific projects that were listed in here right now, or?
If you want to, you can, but it's not necessary right now unless you have something.
Well, I had actually a question about the, the Baker Road crosswalk at Forest, because it says it was removed. And then it says going to be completed in the summer twenty twenty-four. Baker Road project, but I can't see where the Baker, but the Baker Road project looks like that was also postponed, so.
So those got removed because they'll be completed in this fiscal year, um.
With what project? With the what?
The Baker Road.
But the crosswalks aren't.
But where are they, but the Baker Road's not in this, is it in here? Because I couldn't see one that says big, the ones that are in here, say like twenty nineteen. It says like water main replacement moved for twenty twenty-nine, sorry.
The, um, the Baker Road project would have been under, um, so the section six is the road maintenance stuff, and there's six, uh, A, B, C, and D. Uh, and those are all the different types of maintenance that we do. Uh, and so under each of those sheets, it usually lists like what the project are that adopted. So council just adopted, um, the new road plan for starting next year, I think it's through the next year or fifth year. Um.
Okay.
The thing you wanted to start is crosswalks is going to end up coming on in the DVA projects under streets. It's part of, remember, they're going through their strategic plan.
Now.
Right now.
That's part of.
And that's part of.
Okay, so even the ones on Baker further up, or I mean, like at Forest, yeah, that, because that's in the D. And then, okay. Okay, and, and I assume that probably be part of that, that whole intersection will probably be looked at, the stop signs, because I commented before the stop signs are.
A streetscape, yes, now it's part of the Baker Road reconstruction that's going to happen.
But the recon, this, this is not a reconstruction this summer, it's only going to be a mill, it sounds like it's just a mill.
Construction, but yes.
Right, because I know that there is one for, well, there's a water main replacement, and then there's corridor. The water main says twenty twenty-nine, but the corridor said, I think, also twenty twenty-nine somewhere, but, okay. All right, that's clear, so at least the crosswalk at Minimal will be done in this year. Okay. All right, that was kind of my question, I mean, I have other comments on the Baker Road corridor plan, but I'll save those for, for the next CIP discussion. Any other comments or questions on the, on what we're presented here? I don't think we're going to get into the details. Yeah, is there a bike rack on Baker Road? Now we'll be good with that, thank you. I'll get that point. All right, so I guess that's, do you need anything else from us at this time? All right, perfect. Okay, so moving, oh, master plan, five-year review, the next item under new business, so Michelle.
Prior to getting the letter from the school board, which we'll go into in a minute, um, you know that we applied for the housing grant, uh, through MISHDA, um, and the intent is to amend the master plan and subsequently then make tweaks to the ordinance to, um, find ways to encourage more housing. Um, we've been ahead of the curve in updating our master plan and then our zoning ordinance to i- encourage more housing in the. To i- encourage more housing in your town. So we're utilizing the grant, but we're to pick the lessons we've learned. Make those corrections or updates and then continue to move forward. Um. Um. When I present or when I mentioned to council. Um, that we were, you know, applying for this grant, we have a proposal from Carla Wortman to assist with that. Um, one of the commissioner, one of the council people wanted to know if we had done the five year review as it's required in M P. And we've done it in a roundabout fashion, but. They would like it in a formal fashion. And so that's what we're doing today. Would you like to update your, uh, your plan?
So I guess if you wanna share, so in what would entail it? I mean, an update can be.
An update can be.
As much as we want, kind of, correct? I mean, we can delve into as much as.
For the housing, it would be, it would be a minor amendment. Um. Excuse me, um, things like the goals and recommendations. Um, looking at the progress that we've made on the implementation. Um, we've done our zoning ordinance update, but there's still some things we've learned from that in the short period of time. Um, uh, we need to identify potential plan amendments and zoning ordinance amendments. Excuse me, um. We're coming up with. There is a, um. Carla Wortman has provided a scope of work for taking us through this process. It is heavy on public engagement. Very heavy on public. Because of the. Feedback that has come out, um, starting with, uh, Hilltop View Apartments. And funneling through, didn't get a lot of feedback on the Millennium Place. But we've gotten a ton of feedback on Pelham. We've gotten feedback on thirty forty five Broad Street, and it didn't even come here yet. Um, there's been comments on, uh, Mr. Penn's project in Green Street. So, um, in an effort to make sure that it's going to. Plan for increased housing in the community. Um, we're doing it with consensus of the community, in a way the community will support. Um, the other thing that we're looking at as part of this update. Is the policy that's currently in the master plan or planning outside of boundaries. It's not a proactive and that was a deliberate. Uh, decision by council. Um, but the, uh, process that is in, um, has created some. Um. Heartburn is my word, or some numbers on council. Um, that don't like the, the language. This also gives us a chance to relook at that and see how we may, uh, need to tweak that language. And then enters Dexter School. So, um, um. Dexter Schools wants.
Before you jump into that, I would just like to point out that our greatest opportunity to increase housing here. Is to expand beyond our boundaries, um, to the side. I mean, that would be obvious. I mean, we can talk about people building above their garages all we want to, but that's really a farce. Cause we, we have only a handful of sites that are suitable. For additional housing and even that is not really economical.
Um, uh, you're, you're right, Tom, for the south. And along Dexter Chelsea Row now, but the water main is going to be extended. Those are two very big opportunities.
Then we'll just jump to that since before your school is, cause that was, is my biggest concern is now that we, I think as a planning commission, we've. Supported the, the Pelham and in with that comes the water main and with that is going to open up that whole corridor. And that's a concern. It's, what's an opposite concern? Well, it is concerned, but we should look at that. So I think as part of this, we, we never have before because. Even when we've looked at the other properties to the south of the city, we've never looked at that corridor because it was just, it can't happen. So now it can. So I think we, in, in particularly how that impacts. The creek, our creek and our park and all that kind of stuff, because unlike the Pelham, this, that land is pretty much they, you know, it's. Sparsely used, they, you know, the Pelham obviously is a very heavily used site previously that just overgrew, but those, that corridor is key. So I really wanna look.
Um, the good thing is, is when the city, um, um. Did the part and acquired the different land once the D M was taken out. We owned all the land area on the other side of the creek and you, you can almost see it, you've got the.
Yes, yeah. So that's great.
That's ours. So as far as, um. That immediate adjacent to the creek. We've got that buffer, but I do agree with you. What happens along that will have a secondary effect. But it, it. With the extension of the water, it gives the potential for the city to be in control.
Yes.
Of that as opposed to just watching what would happen.
Which I think is a good thing and planning it properly on water and not sewer, you know, so again, that's why I just, I think for the master plan, we need to look at that for sure. We never have before.
I think of I D O C too. I, I mean, we all know that that's expensive, but. I think things change, but things change. The railroad ownership can change. There's a lot of. I, I don't think we should rely on like findings from ten years ago and say. That's just the way it is. We can't do it because it's, you know, X, Y, Z. I think, I think it's worth it to kind of keep in touch. With variables that relate to that and to see if there, there is an evolving opportunity there at some point. And it might not be today, but there might be in five years or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Okay, what would be the properties along, um. Uh, Dexter Chelsea. There's that big open area, kind of.
You got the.
So it's tearing stuff down?
Not, um.
Yeah.
If it were to get redeveloped, probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once that water main, that land becomes very valuable.
Before you get into some smaller, um, already developed, of course, the sand floors.
And then same question about south. What? All I can picture there is big houses. What's, what's down there? I mean, where?
Beyond the industrial part, basically. And then there's in west, not West Ridge, Dexter crossings, there's a couple of stub streets. That, that feed into that right there, which will be interesting.
Okay.
Um. Okay, so now I think, Michelle, the, oh wait, maybe not.
Hold on, but the question here is to commence. To amend the master plan or commence with a full new master plan?
Right, and what do you want to commence?
Or, or a review.
An amendment, a review, it's commence the. Procedure.
Right.
To review, uh, to amend the master plan or to adopt a new. Um. Um. Commencing the procedure to amend or adapt and be. Starting with a review. And that can be something you do.
Yeah, I mean.
As a discussion.
So i- if that's the question, I mean, in my mind. It would make logical sense to commence with a procedure to amend the master plan, but we might get into a procedure of amended. And determine that we need more than an amendment.
Yes.
And if that happens, you don't have to change, you don't have to do some formal correction, it's just.
Keep, we keep moving. It's gonna be a long involved process no matter what, so we should.
You see, Second Street would fall into that category.
Second Street falls into that.
Okay, now maybe give us a school in the background.
So two five oh five Baker Road is the last house. Um, um, before you leave the city limits, it's next to the, um, to the field, basically.
Yeah.
Um. Those bought it in twenty fifteen, it hasn't been used with the residents. Since they bought it. Um, when we updated the master plan. All of the school properties, because they're not subject to zoning, um, we just made them public facilities. Um.
Yeah.
It. It allows them use to, that the school does, um, but now, but nothing else. Um. When we, um. When we updated the zoning ordinance, we did the same thing, we created the public facilities district and that's what it's selling. Um, and everything was fine and so the. Schools have decided they want to sell it. And when they had the appraisal done. The appraiser said, well, it can't be used for residential, because this is what it's sold. Um, so they asked what the process was to get it rezoned. I gave them a very conservative, um, timeline and, um. They did not like that and so they want an expedited rezoning. Um. It's since. A rezoning is predicated on what the master plan is. We would need to amend our master plan. And then. Do the zoning. And so what I've done for you, and that's the supplement you've had. Um, excuse me, if you so choose to know. To say you want to commence with the, uh, amendment to the plan, whether it's for. The potential rezoning on. For property or because we're looking at a housing brand. You were going to be looking at this question July first anyway. We're just speeding it up a little less since it's launched. Um, you could do that tonight. A notice of intent would, um, uh, be mailed out or distributed to. Um. Uh, be joining many communities, Seminole. Road Commission, Railroad Utilities, everything that was supposed to buy in state law. Um. Staff would take the next month to prepare the amendment as it pertains to the schools. Um, I've just looked at that right now. The, um. Um, planning commission would consider that on the fourth. If you were so inclined to do, um, a recommendation to council, you would do it on the fourth. Council could consider that recommendation on the eleventh. And if they were accepting of the recommendation, it would go to a forty day, I'm sorry, forty two day public comment period. Which would end on April twenty third. Planning commission would then conduct a public hearing at their May sixth meeting. Um, to consider that amendment. At the same time, you could then consider the rezoning by holding a public hearing, same meeting. And then you can make a recommendation, if you so chose, to the planning commission on both. They could take that recommendation and, um, take action on it on the thirteenth. If the amendment was adopted, it would take immediate effect of the master plan. And if it was, the rezoning was approved, it would become effective May twenty second. That's an expedited rezoning for the schools. Um, one of the things the schools had mentioned is that. Um. Uh. They finance that financially, or they're financially harmed each day. If, uh, it's being prevented from selling its real estate. They're not being prevented from selling their real estate, especially if you're in the process, because they can. Do a purchase agreement subject to.
Well, and I think also to point out very importantly, Michelle, to add to that is there's state law regulations that we can't, nobody can. I mean, we, I'm surprised it's even this fast. Is expedited, which, which again, I think is kind of fine, because I don't think anybody's necessarily gonna have a problem with that, or I don't, I shouldn't say. But, but so I think this timeline is fast, but I don't, you can't by law get it any less.
Get it any.
So I.
Not unless you set up special meetings, but that's.
But even it.
It may get you two weeks.
I was gonna say, even at that, just based on, so, I mean, I, I, right, and I think.
First of all, why, why, when somebody decides to do something, all of a sudden, like, our process is like. The big obstacle, where were they like three years ago?
It's always like that.
Totally agree. What's there left though? They have a buyer probably.
But they can sell a contingent, but it happens all the time.
Can't they sell it as a nonconforming?
But who's gonna, but.
And they can't get the money.
Yeah, who's gonna buy it else? I could.
I, I, I get that, because if they really wanted to sell it, they could enter a purchase agreement on the income, but. We decided to change all this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, or they could sell it as nonconforming and somebody would have to deal with that and the rest and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
There's things they could do, there's something they could move in there tomorrow, if they wanted to. Sure.
Well, no, somebody could not move in there. Yeah. Not for residential, so it's not zone for that.
Well, it would be storage when they move their stuff in, if they weren't living in it.
Well, but okay, but assuming they wanted to, but assuming they want to do it the correct way, I think. Although again, they, like, nothing's stopping them from selling contingency right now, or they're selling it. Or even on a contingency reason. So I think, but Michelle's task is just to, to give us or. To give them the feedback from us, really, so we can't tell the school what to sell or when, so, yes. Karen?
Um, right, if, if it could be a nonconforming use, well, why do we need to do this then?
Because they requested it and my job is to provide that.
And also financing and insurance always become problematic when you're dealing with a nonconforming use.
Okay, okay, yeah.
When I look at this on Matt Washington, there's all the personal information. I click on it, there's all kinds of, you know, the roundabout with Thomas property, there's the school access that's probably. May or may not be an easement. I don't even know what's left over once they. Create the proper easements and the proper right of way.
All that's been created.
It doesn't, okay, so I'm just telling you.
Matt Washington doesn't show the easements.
I understand that, but there's a road right of way, public road right of way, right? This is all.
Oh, um.
It's a school access.
It's not been updated.
So is there enough left? To conform a residential?
I believe so, because remember, we can have as small as, um, what is it?
Small slot, yeah, so it's like forty thousand.
And then this is one of three parcels that sit here that are engulfed by the school property. And we're gonna go back and rezone it to residential. It feels a lot like spot zoning a little bit to me.
But the other ones are, are zoned. Dirty zone residential. Yeah.
Their master.
Master, do spot zoning, that's no big deal.
Oh.
Because those two properties are privately owned and not owned by the schools.
Right.
But we master planned them in case the schools decided they wanted to buy them.
So from a planning perspective, what's changed about this area that will compel me as a planning commissioner? To decide that in the future, this should be something other than public lands? The fact that they wanna sell that?
That's what they're asking, yes. But that's our decision process, right? You're right, Tom. That's, that's part of the rezoning.
And, and what Michelle's outlined here is a. Aggressive approach to meet that.
Yes, very aggressive. I mean, that's as fast as it can possibly be. So a- again, we ultimately, and it doesn't give them a guarantee of what the solution would be at the end, because you're right, once we get required information and all that. But the zoning decision is still gonna be based on all of our, our opinions at that, you know, of what we see, so I think. But I think just, again, what Michelle, the direction now, I think is, is just whether or not, um. We're willing to engage in this expedited schedule, I guess.
What, what's it gonna be zone to?
Um, it, I would recommend, um. Multiple family, and that way you've got consistency with the other two properties.
Okay.
In, although the.
Is that what the, the buyer wants?
Um, the other reason is, again, if we're thinking about. Um, one of the goals in the master plan, which is creating more opportunities for housing. Just being single family detail, which has its complications. Um. Um. Uh, the primary one being what time, it becomes a spot zoning. Yeah, so how we thread this needle?
Okay, sure.
Well, in, in, right, it's ultimately incumbent upon the property owner to make their, their argument for rezoning. I mean, I see some justification behind it, but. But it is interesting that the other properties. I forgot that were, well, I want your master plan for public facilities too, so we kind of need, I mean.
But they're zoned multiple.
Oh, that's true.
So they're.
Yeah, so there's own, but either way, there's. I don't.
Yeah, I, I printed out the one on there.
Okay, so, um.
Oh, I printed out the one.
Why not? I mean, I'm seeing kind of me. We're cow tooling.
Hang on, hang on, I'm wrong. It is our one, that, that's my bad, so you're right.
A checklist, yeah.
Why not?
So, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, like, I mean, I mean, again, I think just agreeing to this process doesn't say whether we're gonna agree ultimately to the rezoning.
Correct.
So that's, so I think, again, it's worth it, just. But I guess then the only question, Michelle, becomes that we have to fo-. Since we all, it, it seemed like. We want the master plan to be revision, but first we're just gonna start with just this one subject. And get that out of the way and then continue with the rest of it. And get that out of the way and then continue with the rest of it?
It would become a second, is what it would be, if we're dealing with housing one, because the housing one's gonna be a longer.
A longer one, right, well, that's what, it's gonna have to be. So, additional, so I guess, what Michelle is. So what, I mean, because we don't need an action item on it, but you're just looking for a direction on kind of whether or not we would entertain this.
So they could submit requesting annex, uh, rezoning. But the response would be. It doesn't meet the master plan. And we, as a planning commission, could take action on that, but that's creates risk on our end, because we've changed the. We haven't followed the master plan. But the master plan could follow later in the manner that it's just that puts that risk to being against their master plan, right? Well, that, that's how we spot zone Hilltop, because we changed the master plan. Didn't we remind anyone so far?
Community garden.
Right. Right.
Okay, I forgot that, okay. Yes, we did.
That's how it's done.
So, yeah, we could do that.
Well, I don't have an objection to it. I mean, I know I.
The school's property, who cares?
Um, okay.
No, I mean.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, so, yes, I.
Well, it is a.
But there's good issues.
It's sort of a, a tough precedent. Like, I would really like to make my house a, you know, restaurant, you know?
Well, yeah, but I think, but yeah, I think, and we can justify, because again, remember that she, they're gonna have to justify the rezoning. And so we can look in those, and just like if there's any other property, like if they're asking to put a restaurant there, they're rezoning it to commercial, we would look to that and say, no, it doesn't work. So we still have that ability, but I understand what you're saying, it's a little bit of a unique, it's certainly a very unique situation, but I think. I've got no problem going forward.
Yeah, and residential is a low.
Right, residential is very low. Yeah.
It's not like, you know, we're zoning into, uh, industry.
And it's a really small parcel.
Yeah.
It's not like, okay. So I think in general, we kind of hear support. In. In general, but.
I.
Correct, yep.
I wanted to change it right away.
If you want to initiate.
Oh, okay, all right, so we need a formal, uh, we need a motion and action, okay, so what? Having said that, I don't know, we don't have a simple motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, do whatever.
If you're not.
I make more specific, but.
There is nothing saying that you must initiate, no. This is just the expedited to show. This is just a. Visual to show what an expedited could look like. If you would prefer to wait till next month. You could do that, it just puts things off.
Right.
I just want to make sure that you don't feel like you have to do it.
Right, okay, you understand that?
Uh, yeah, I, I make a motion that we initiate the, uh, expedited result, uh, rezoning process. For this person.
Well, the master planning.
Right, 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 including the master plan.
I just want to make sure we put that in there.
Right.
Karen, sorry. Okay, yes, Karen, you seconded it, okay, so then, again, this does leave us. Still available for all of our comments as a regular process may, may, uh, as it goes forward. Okay, so, check.
In general. Agreed, but to move. Forward so quickly, we came before the ninth. And, and the city only received it on the first. It's, um, it would seem reasonable to wait a while and. Give it a little more. Plot or discussion before we move on. I don't, I'm not really opposed to voting on it tonight, but it.
It is, yes, you're right.
This will, it discussed at council, not necessarily in the same degree that you're talking. This council isn't the one that would initiate the amendment, but you may get feedback from them that they don't want to amend, but they expect. Us to go through the zoning process. And they do what I always do, which is say, I don't recommend that, I don't. They get to make those decisions.
I really, I'm sorry, I really like the idea of getting into a process about amending the master plan. And looking at the updates based on what we've talked about, we, I'm really concerned that we're trying to expedite something. Based on a request and the precedent that that may set for other things. I'm concerned that we've learned here that races. Moving along to another position with another community, which leaves us, in my opinion, a little shorthanded to undertake. An expedited rezoning or master plan and all that together. I'm assuming most of this is gonna be run through staff and not a consultant.
More than likely, unless I find myself too underwater. So, let me step back. It's little, it actually, if we're looking at just this. It's an amendment to the map. It's probably not any language. And. And that would be done by Kyle Ward. Or with their assistance. Correct.
Separating the issues. I, I mean, I would prefer that, but. Combining them, so.
Aren't we almost doing the same, doing them both at the same time? I, I know it's late, so there's questions like this, but. I mean, it, once the master plan changes that particular parcel, doesn't it de facto go to the new?
Zone, no. You still have to take that.
Okay, so we're gonna say. Okay, well, I, I can't wait to find out what we're gonna say.
Hey, Tim, you can come back to that again. Um, it was just about, was that the public hearing?
It was, it was to, yeah, it was to proceed with the, um, process to.
Initiate.
Initiate and expedite it.
So that would. But, and it does kick off everything, it kicks out the whole master plan process in a way, or it can.
And we've, we've done this before.
Right, yeah, we have done this before.
This isn't, this isn't a big deal, or it's not unique, we did it for Hilltop, so.
Well, it's a little unique, but you're right, we've done it before.
It's, it's in schools, property, it's really.
And I understand the, the pressure, like, don't want to react, if there was a different property owner coming into us and demanding this. So. I, I get it.
Having said that, it was a different property, for some wanting things to happen like right now.
You'd say too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's brutal, yeah. That's what we're debating, so. Yes, exactly. No other thoughts, feedback? Michelle, do you want to add anything else? I mean, are you kind of clear? So what, Tom?
I'm very clear. My motion is to initiate. Um, or to initiate an amendment to the master plan in order to expedite a rezoning. A potential rezoning, on this potential, okay, done. That way it doesn't.
Yeah, potential, right, yeah, you're good.
And Karen seconded it, so.
Yes, are you good with that? Okay, okay, so, this would start off, guys, everybody's clear. Is Healy, you're clear? Okay, Mr. Phillips. You missed a couple people, all right, perfect, well, that's about like me. Any other last thoughts? Phillips, nobody else? Okay, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Healy?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hill? Phillips?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. So.
We've got three to.
Yeah, it does pass. Four, four, two, yeah. Okay. And for Mr. Covert, Mr. Hill, we've got plenty of opportunities to get additional feedback as we're going through this, so. Because you guys both raised really good points, so it's, it's a tricky process for sure. Okay, so I, I shuffled my agenda, but I believe that was the last. Item. Other than our public comment, which we usually have at the, at the end, where's the agenda? Okay, thank you. Can I borrow your agenda, Karen? Um, let's see, yes, we're through that one, this plan, proposed business for next agenda, for next meeting, February, or should be March.
Wow, I do that every.
That's okay. So we've got the public hearings that we set for, that we set tonight regarding the P U D, uh, the draft C I P review, what else might we have?
Superior Storage.
Oh, yes, okay.
And the master plan amendment.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, citizens wishing to address the commission? There's nobody behind the podium? Okay, nobody online, all right, is there a motion to adjourn? Support Phillips, support Covert, uh, in favor of adjournment, say aye, aye, opposed. None, meeting is adjourned.